All right, it is 7:01. I will call us to order. This is the regularly scheduled October 14th, 2025 meeting of the East Lansing Board of Education. Ms. Hokor, can we get a roll call vote? Roll call? I did that again. I did it again.
Trustee Martin?
Here.
Trustee Lyons?
Here.
Trustee Edsel? Trustee Ferris Highland?
Here.
Trustee Chambers? Trustee Torres?
Here.
Trustee Taikaki?
Here.
Student Representative Dejiha? Student Representative Megya?
Here.
And Superintendent Laco?
Here.
Thank you. And Trustee Edsel and Trustee Chambers are both excused. Trustee Lyons, can you read our mission statement?
I sure can. So, um, the mission statement of East Lansing is nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I move that the Board of Trust-- the Board of Education approved the October 14th, 2025 regular meeting agenda as presented.
Second?
It's moved by Trustee Torres, seconded by Trustee Taikaki. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. Aye. Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion for the approval of minutes?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following minutes as presented, September 25, 2025, regular meeting.
Second?
All right, motion's made by Trustee Lyons, seconded by Trustee Ferris Highland. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. Aye. Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. Now, the next item on the agenda is recognition. I understand we have some good stuff tonight.
We do. I have a ton, which is great. Let me begin. Um, on Friday, October 17th, at 7:30 PM, a group of outstanding local high school musicians, including our very own senior, Sarah FEMA Bozglova, will share the spotlight with professionals at the Fraternal Center in Muskegon. Seema, who's a violinist in the Fourth Movement String Quartet, will perform Eleanor Rigby, A Day in the Life, Hello Goodbye, Hey Jude, Gimme Shelter, and Ruby Tuesday. Seema was the winner of the Vivaldi International Music Competition, and she plans on getting a degree in violin performance and wants to perform music professionally for the rest of her life. In other music news, our East Lansing Marching Band won second place recently at the Great Lakes Invitational with a score of 78.8 as well as an outstanding percussion. In alumni news, 2020 East Lansing graduate Tashanri Gray was crowned LSU's 2025 Homecoming King. Tashanri, along with Kalania Walker, who's not an East Lansing grad, were crowned the second black king and queen in the university's history. Associate Principal Jeff Lampy said he represents everything true about our Trojan family. And another awesome 2020 grad, Alya Nai, led the WNBA Las Vegas Aces to a national championship on October 10th. Locally, we'd like to congratulate White Hills 4th grade teacher Danielle Smalley for winning state rep Penelope Serenglu's Teacher of the Month Award in October. And finally, two of our East Lansing High School teachers completed the Chicago Marathon this past weekend, PE teacher Ms. Brazee and math teacher Maggie Moore. Ms. Brazee is going for her sixth star major medal for honors runners who compete the six original major marathons, and Chicago was number three out of six, which is pretty awesome. And Mrs. Moore completed her 22nd marathon, and after some calculations that were not done by me, because they're mathematical, considering all the mileage that she covered in her training programs and races, it was determined she circled the globe 1.4 times on foot, which is just outrageous. So, um, that is my recognition for the night.
That is really, that's really interesting. Do any other board members wish to offer recognition? I will offer one bit of recognition. Um, the middle schoolers had their final cross-country meet yesterday, and we had a ton of students who did a really great job. There was one student who finished first among the boys, and it was Trustee Taikaki's son, Henry, first among the boys for the team. So, it was a really, um, it was a really awesome event and saw some great people there. Happy to be a part of it. Congrats to all of the, uh, all the, all the guys, all the guys and girls on the team who participated. All right. Well, if that concludes recognition, we'll move on to our student representative report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we're gonna start off with just like a little fair warning. Our report this time is a bit more detailed than it usually is, but that's just because there's like a lot of exciting things happening.
So, we wanted to kick things off with like a more school-wide update. So, we just wrapped up the NHS CCAN drive, which I'd say was pretty successful. And, um, also related to NHS, we're gearing up for the upcoming blood drive and also are having a scrap metal drive this Sunday. So, there's lots of ways for students to give back and volunteer.
And then, um, moving into sports, our cross-country team has absolutely been crushing it. Both JV and varsity won the Shepherd Meet, which is like a huge race with a lot of different schools competing, and a bunch of, um, runners are setting like a lot of new PRs. And a sophomore, Killian Bolwer Lopez, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right, is now officially the sixth fastest sophomore in East Lansing history. So, it's pretty impressive.
Um, and over in the pool, Swim and Dive has also been doing great. Uh, they've won every meet but one, even after losing a lot of seniors last year, and they brought home a big win at the Waverly Relays, which they haven't done in quite some time. Um, and a special shout-out to Ava Harmon, who qualified for MISCO, which is basically like a statewide, um, swim competition. So, that's a really big accomplishment for her.
And then, um, golf also had like a strong end to their season along with water polo. So, water polo had their senior night last night, and they ended off with a good seas-- like season in general. But for golf, they actually placed third at regionals, and we already knew they were gonna do great because of Addie Luajie's hole-in-one earlier in the season. So, we just can see how hard they've worked for it. And then shifting gears a little bit, our portrait and yearbook students out-- oh, sorry-- also got the chance to attend the MIPA conference recently. So, they came back with like full of ideas and lots of inspiration to make this year's publications one of the best ones.
Um, jumping a little bit back to the pool, Water Polo also just celebrated their senior night last night, wrapping up a strong season and honoring their season, um, their seniors for all their hard work. And speaking of cool opportunities, some of our students, especially the ones, I think, on Student Congress, right? Yeah, are, um, headed to the MSU soon for a youth summit focused on equitable education. Um, it's an awesome hands-on experience, and we're really excited to represent East Lansing there.
And then to kind of build off of, like, off of what was being said earlier about the band, they placed second at Plymouth Canton, which we already know about, and they won best percussion. But, um, this Friday, they're also going around to twirl the elementary school. So, they're gonna be doing like a little demonstration and like a fun little performance for all the kids.
Um, and over in student, um, student life, Powder Puff signups are officially closed and practices are underway. And the game later this month is sure to bring a ton of excitement and friendly competition. And finally, in the library, the annual pumpkin decorating competition is back, and it's one of everyone's favorite fall traditions. It's always fun to see how creative people get.
So, overall, October is shaping up to be a very busy month, as you can tell from our very long report. But, um, like, events are ramping up, and students are really diving into everything from like athletics to arts and then like all the way to community service. So, there's a lot of positive energy going around right now. It's also great to just see everyone so involved and engaged in everything, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you both. And by the way, never say you're sorry for telling us about the good things that are happening, because it's always so refreshing to hear about the great things that are happening. Sometimes when you're on this side of the table, you tend to hear more about things that aren't going so well. So, it's always great to hear from you guys. All right. Next item on the agenda is our superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Laco.
Thank you. I also would say, um, it's also a good night when we have so much to share, and it doesn't overlap between our student representatives, our recognition, and my report. And I did think of one more piece of recognition I wanted to mention when, um, when our students were telling us about, uh, our yearbook and journalism students being down at the MIPA conference last week. I happened to be down there for a different event at the Lansing Center. Principal Schwartzbeck and I attended, um, the 2025 Michigan Gun Violence Intervention Summit at the Lansing Center. We went down to support our student. Our high school student, Jessica Milak, was one of five local high school students to be part of the youth panel at the Gun Violence Intervention Summit. Uh, the panel was moderated by Sergeant Ty Howard, and students shared strategies, stories, and perspectives on how we can make a lasting impact on reducing gun violence across our state. So, um, that was really, uh, Jessica did a great job with her comments and representing East Lansing High School. So, I just wanted to mention that as well. Um, my report, lots to share as well. Um, finally, I'm able to share that free school meals will definitely continue for '25, '26. This year's state budget has been approved and was just signed by the governor yesterday. We are thankful that free school meals were included in this budget and that all of our students will continue to have access to healthy meals at school at no cost to their families. Uh, we also just completed, we welcomed, um, our German exchange partners. So, I know the board, um, approved a trip for this past summer where our teachers took some of our students over to Germany. But then, from September 19th through 30th, 20 students and two teachers from Sebold Gymnasium in Wurzburg, Bavaria, Germany came to East Lansing, where they stayed with host families and explored Michigan's history, culture, and community. Highlights included an urban garden tour in downtown Detroit, a visit to the Michigan State Capitol, stepping inside the men's basketball locker room at MSU's Breslin Center, a dune ride at Silver Lake, a ride on a yellow school bus, yes, that was a highlight, and a farewell dinner at Patriarch Park. Students also joined our classrooms, experienced homecoming festivities, and participated in soccer, golf, pickleball, and more. East Lansing and Sebold have been partner schools for over 45 years, with students traveling every other year for two-week culture and classroom exchanges. This past July, East Lansing High School students visited Wurzburg. And I'd like to recognize and thank East Lansing High School German teachers Bob Filter and Adam Orange for their dedication to this program and to our students, and thank our host families for opening their homes and providing these opportunities to our partners. Update again on our East Lansing Public Schools Health Center. Uh, it is near, the grand opening is near. Sparrow, U of M Health Sparrow is awaiting some final inspections and is expected to be open for patients in the next couple weeks. We will share opening information as soon as that date is confirmed. Parent guardian consent forms and student information forms will be sent home with students this week. In the case where your student may access the health center, we will need these forms completed and signed by a parent or guardian or student if age 18 plus. There's an informational letter in the packet, uh, being sent home, and please return completed forms to the main office of your student's school, and we will ensure that they are kept confidential and delivered to the East Lansing Public Schools Health Center, so the information can be put into their system. All students between the ages of five and 21 or 26 with an IEP are eligible to utilize our health center. A little bit on, just a reminder on how to follow our social media to see more daily communication and happenings in our district. We have three social media platforms that are posted on regularly, Facebook, East Lansing Public Schools, on Instagram, East Lansing PS, and on X, formerly Twitter, also at East Lansing PS. So, this will go out again to families to remind them if they want more updates or to see some of the awesome things that are happening, um, how they can access that information. A little bit of a construction update. If you've been to East Lansing High School recently, you've noticed that construction of a new secure entrance, front-facing main office, student collaboration spaces, an interior ramp, and a second cafeteria space is well underway. This project is completed, is expected to be completed by the start of the '26, '27 school year. Our new administration building is also on schedule to be completed this December, and you can follow those social media, uh, platforms for more progress photos. I'm gonna talk a minute about our professional learning days for staff. And first, I've included the dates of our five professional learning Fridays, with one of them being a Thursday. For '25, '26, our, we've already had one, uh, that was in September. Our next one is Friday, October 31st, yes, Halloween. Then we have one December 12th. Uh, February 12th is a Thursday. This is the day before a long mid-winter break weekend, um, so that we already don't have school that Friday and Monday. So, families and students won't have school that Thursday either due to professional learning. And then Friday, April 24th. Uh, please mark your calendars, as there is no school for students on these days. And our professional learning days offer an opportunity for staff to engage in conference-style sessions in the morning that are focused on our three mission statement-aligned goals. Nurture each child, where we offer sessions around wellness, safety, social emotional learning. Educating all students, where sessions are offered all around teaching and learning. And building world citizens, uh, which are sessions focused on equity, inclusion, and belonging. All staff reports to East Lansing High School for their self-selected morning session, with a few required sessions for specific groups throughout the year, and then returns to their buildings for the second half of the day to participate in building-level work groups or professional learning communities. Staff are also required to complete a series of professional learning modules to comply with state laws and board policies around topics that include mandatory reporting of suspected child abuse, neglect, or exploitation, Title IX, FERPA, and automatic external defibrillators, AEDs. Last month, we offered 16 different sessions at our first professional learning Friday that included Introduction to Mental Health First Aid, Safer Schools, Safer Communities, Prevention for Educators, AED CPR, which is now required for all first-year teachers, School AI Implementation, Personal Curriculum Essentials, Essential Information to Support Achievement, Handwriting Bootcamp, From Syllable Types to Super Sentences, Restorative Questioning in Circles, Social Justice Primer, and Making the EJ at Work for You. Our next professional learning Friday is October 31st. Also, last month, we shared resources for safe gun storage and guidance for talking to your children about guns. We have some additional information and resources to share. Districts are required to send information home to parents and caregivers on the safe storage of firearms. This is in accordance with the safe storage laws. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services provided this information to the Michigan Department of ED, MDE, for distribution. So, there's links in here to what is the secure storage law in Michigan and a safe storage notice. This just complements what we sent home last month on, um, safe storage and along with how to talk to your children about guns in homes. ELPS is proud to offer free gun safety locks for distribution to students, families, and staff. This opportunity is made possible through the Michigan State Police, Grants, and Community Services Division. And just email me or call my office if you would like to arrange to pick up a free gun and safety lock. I also have linked here, school calendars are completed through '27, '28, and they are on our website. So, I have a link to all of those calendars that will be sent out tomorrow as well, and they are divided into each of the years. And then, elementary, middle, and high school, they're all a little bit different, um, because of conferences and exams. And then a couple of dates, important dates coming up. I've mentioned the 31st for a professional learning day, and then November 24th through 28th, there is no school for Thanksgiving week. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Laco. Are there any questions or comments for the superintendent? I, I love hearing about the German exchange program. It's really neat.
I had a chance to go down and meet with them when they were in our building one day. Principal Schwartzbeck and I had a chance to go down and just talk to them for a few minutes and have a little breakfast with them on their, their first day in the building. So, it was fun to engage with them.
If there's nothing further, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include the following. A, new hire, one hiring of, oh, let me say this wrong. Mooney Choi as a conditional hire pending attainment of certification, 1.0 FTE Resource Room teacher, ASD focus at Marble Elementary at BA Step 3 effective October 15th, 2025. The individual will be paid at a daily rate of $200 until certification is received.
Second?
All right, the motion was made by Trustee Lyons, seconded by Trustee Ferris Highland. There's no discussion on the consent agenda, so we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. Aye. Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. Um, do we have Mooney Choi with us today?
She's already employed in the district, has been employed for a number of years as a parent professional, so we know her well. Yeah.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you for helping with-- I hate saying names wrong, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we can move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment. I have a couple of public comment slips here. These are blue forms that you can pick up at the entry. If you would like to make public comment, uh, please, uh, fill out a blue slip and make sure that Ms. Hokor, uh, gets it so that she can bring it up to me, so we have a record that you were here. I will read the statement that goes along with public comment. It says, "This is the opportunity to address the board. Speakers are to confine their remarks to five minutes. If a speaker requires more than five minutes, after all other persons who have requested to speak during this part of the meeting have spoken, then that speaker will be allowed additional time. Superintendent or other district staff may comment to clear up or avoid significant misunderstandings." And so, I'll look at, I have two public commenters right now. The first one is Carissa Buchholz, who's here to talk about Glen Cairn Elementary Access and Crosswalks. And it is, you know, kind of tedious to have to go all the way around, so apologize to Ms. Buchholz for making her do that.
I don't wanna climb up there. She thought I should, but I don't really want to. Um, so, good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. Um, I'm Carissa Buchholz. I'm the parent of a second grader at Glen Cairn Elementary School. I'm here to request support from the school board, um, for a petition for safer crossing at the Harrison and North Lawn Crosswalk in front of Glen Cairn Elementary School. This petition has been endorsed by the Glen Cairn Elementary School Community Council and the East Lansing Transportation Commission, in addition to, um, the proposed truck restriction on Harrison Avenue, which was recommended by the East Lansing Transportation Commission in May. I would like to note, um, that the city has already addressed some of the issues on the petition, including installing additional signage at the crossing, more regular staffing at the crossing guard position, installing a street lamp and radar speed signs, of which we are really grateful for. Uh, these measures are helping slow down traffic some. The city is currently working with an engineering firm to propose a longer-term solution for the crosswalk. The petition that, um, requested that a raised crosswalk and installation of a pedestrian signal be installed as part of that longer-term solution. Uh, we don't know if that will be included yet or not. In addition to the infrastructure improvements at the crosswalk, uh, we are in need of a city ordinance to restrict truck traffic on the road. Given the school's proximity to the 127 construction project, as well as multiple MSU projects, we can have dozens, if not a couple of hundred, large construction trucks, many of which are carrying well over 100,000 pounds of gravel, travel through the crosswalk daily. Many of these trucks are Michigan trains or double-trailer trucks, of which I would like to note are actually banned in many states on highways, yet we are experiencing these coming through our school zone. This is particularly problematic as we have a blind hill on the south side of the crosswalk, so these truck drivers cannot see us until they are right up on us. MDOT has agreed to reroute their trucks for the 127 temporarily, but this is only a short-term fix, and we need a long-term solution to ensure the safety of our children. Uh, the petition and the potential truck restriction are on the city council's agenda, October 21st, next week for a vote. I would like to kindly ask that the school board be willing to support the petition and the truck restriction. Your support would send a message, a very strong one, um, about the importance of the student safety and could help influence the council's decision. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Buchholz, and thank you for your advocacy. The, uh, the next item, the next public commenter is Will Paddock from ELEA.
Good evening, everybody. Um, for anybody who doesn't know me, my name is Will Paddock. I'm a science teacher at the high school. I was also recently elected as the, uh, ELEA or the Teachers Union President. Um, I'm also a parent in the district, community member. I was born here. I've been around for a minute. So, nice to meet anyone who, who may not be familiar with me, or if I haven't met you. I came this evening to speak to the board, and I appreciate the opportunity. Um, first of all, just to introduce myself. Uh, I've been to a couple of board meetings since my election, but I haven't spoken to you, so I thought I would take a minute just to say hello. Um, I also had some really great recognitions to share, but you stole all of them. So, between you and the students, they've all, and I won't, I won't repeat them, even though some of them maybe bear repeating. Um, but I think, uh, one thing I wanted to share tonight is just that, uh, in my new role as union president, I've had the opportunity to get into so many buildings. And, you know, I've, I've, again, been in the community for a long time. I have a daughter at the middle school, a son who graduated from the high school last year, so I have a lot of experience. But it certainly has been, um, I would say, an eye-opening and, and very, uh, steep learning curve in this new role. So, um, it's been wonderful to be, uh, be able to interact with so many of my colleagues who I haven't had interactions with before and with administration, and it's been, uh, been really interesting to learn so much more about, uh, a space that I've been in for so long. Just a couple of specific things to share, and then I'll let you get back to the rest of your agenda. But, um, one thing that I'm hearing from middle school teachers is that they're very much appreciative of the new support they have in the hallways, and this is obviously something that was approved by the board. But, um, they are loving their new electronic pass system. They are loving the people in the hallways to help just be there and, and be present when students are around. And, um, what I'm hearing from those teachers is that it's just created a really nice, like, hallway environment. That's been a big improvement. So, thank you to the board and everyone who supported, uh, those resources, right? Because that does take, uh, time and energy. So, that's great. Um, the other one that we're really excited about is the sick bank. And so, as, you know, people may or may not be so aware of all the new provisions in the contract, but there is quite a bit of new language in the contract. One of the, um, I think, really exciting things is that we do now have provisions for a sick bank or a medical leave bank. Um, this is gonna provide teachers who are facing long-term illness or, um, or pregnancy, um, uh, which, you know, these are, uh, seasons of life that can be challenging, and to have the support of knowing that you can have a little bit of extra time away from work that's paid leave, it's, it is certainly a privilege and a blessing to have a, a job where you have paid leave. And now we have additional paid leave for teachers who may, again, be in a season of life where they need that little extra support. So, um, excited about, uh, what's to come with, with the medical leave bank and appreciative of support in the middle school. And, and there's many other things, but that's all I'm gonna take the time to share tonight. So, um, so thank you, and, uh, thank you for being here and support of our students and teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Paddock, and, uh, we look forward to working with you as well. All right, is there any other public comment before we close public comment? We will close, uh, public comment at this time. Uh, thank you to everybody who appeared for public comment. The next item on the agenda is board discussion. Um, we do have, um, a couple of items for board discussion that we have listed here. Um, I guess we'll take them one at a time. I think there may also be an additional item on here. So, um, that, uh, Trustee Ferris Highland mentioned to me earlier this week. So, um, I can kick it off with, uh, the first item on the agenda, which I know came up with Intergovernmental Relations Committee, a collaborative meeting request for joint action on after-school youth needs. Uh, Trustee Torres, did you wanna speak to this?
Yes. So, uh, the, the, there was a letter that we received from the East Lansing, sorry, the, so sorry. I don't know if I need the glasses or if I don't need the glasses.
Well, I kinda put you on the spot, so.
Yeah, I know, talking about seasons of life, right? Here we go. So, we received a, a, a letter from the East Lansing Public Library regarding, um, yeah, support for after-school programming and given some of the, um, a need to support our youth after school. Um, we all know that there's limited opportunities for our young people to go after school. There are limited space. There's limited activities for them. And so, um, we received a, a letter asking, from the library, asking for some type of collaboration and partnership. And so, that we received an, uh, an, uh, an email or a letter-- so that we received an, an email or a letter asking for a meeting, to, to think through with the library and the city council, to come up with collaborative efforts, to, to sort, to address these concerns.
And this would just be, as I understand it, how can the, how can we support programming happening at the library and/or the Hannah Center in connection with the city?
Yeah.
Is the, is the idea?
Yeah, so it'd be a joint effort, yeah.
So, I think it was like, to have all of us come together and have a conversation?
Yeah, they just want to have a, they want to have a, a great big meeting about it, I guess.
Yeah, so the initial, so, so the request was for initial meeting to discuss what that might look like.
I would support our attending that meeting.
Yeah, definitely.
Just a reminder, if there's more than three of you there, it has to be an open meeting, otherwise we'd want to send three folks.
Yes, yes. There was, there hasn't been a meeting set, but it was, the letter was for a request to begin the conversations, to set a meeting, to see if the, we as a school were interested in having that meeting.
So, it, yeah, so...
I guess the question is, do we want it to be an intergovernmental meeting?
Yes.
Or, which I think it should be, and then we report back?
I would, yeah, I would support that. I would, I would think that trustee Torres, if you don't mind taking the lead on it, as chair of the Intergovernmental Committee, you and anybody else in that committee could certainly be a part of that, and if, for some reason, somebody from the committee doesn't want to go, anyone else from the board can go, as long as it's three.
Somebody else could be there as an observer.
Yeah.
Just not as a participant.
And so, I think, obviously, we support this. We've done everything we can to support the programming at the library, and we want to keep those lines open with the city, too. So, my thought would be to just have the Intergovernmental Committee do the communication, and go through these initial meetings, and if there's anything that the whole board needs to be involved in, you can report back.
Yeah, so I, yeah, so the, the reply will be that, yes, we're interested in having that meeting, the Intergovernmental Committee will have the meeting, and then we'll come back to the whole board before moving forward with any further solid plans.
Is that, is that something that we can all get behind?
Yes.
Alright, well, congratulations, trustee Torres.
I do want to add that I am, this high school offers after-school tutoring, which is great, and a lot of high school students have been utilizing that, and I did go to the library to observe recently, specifically, and it was really well, the kids were really well behaved and attended to, and I spoke with some of the, you know, the library employees, and they agreed, you know, but they just, but they also emphasized they want more support, right? And, and I went on a couple of nice days, so kids, I know when it rains and it's snowy, it's, it's busier in there, so, but what they're doing right now is wonderful. What the high school is doing right now for tutoring is a really great offering, but, I mean, we've been wanting to collaborate for years, and so I think this is a great opportunity, so, thank you for taking it on.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, trustee Torres, you can respond to them, and...
Yes.
And anything that you might want to check in with superintendent Lakeo before, to see what, to what degree the administration wants to be involved as well.
Is this a resolution to support, do I read this? No, okay.
No, I don't think we need to do anything.
Okay.
I think we're just kind of delegating right now.
Okay.
Speaking of delegating, how's that for a transition? We do need to appoint delegates for the MASB Assembly, that we typically do two. There are two people missing from the meeting tonight, but I, I'll say that last year's delegates were trustee Chambers and, and I was the other delegate. This was something that we probably should have figured out at our last meeting, but I failed to put it on the agenda, and I take responsibility for that. So, I'm happy to continue serving as a delegate, and I have not heard any objection from trustee Chambers from serving as a delegate, and if we did that, we could, we don't have to change anything with MASB. However, if somebody else is interested in serving, I would certainly step aside if that's something they would like to do.
What does it entail?
Going to a meeting that we didn't go to last year. So, there are, I think it's one of these roles where we can be as involved as we want to be, and we did not do, we did not do a ton last year, but obviously, the climate is different this year, you know, where there is going to be a different role for school boards, following, you know, the, kind of the, the difficult budget situation, and then, you know, there's always, there's bad news about special education, kind of from the federal government, so, I, you know, I don't want to gloss over, it might be, it might be a more involved role in the coming year or years.
Does it require attendance in, at the Grand Travers Resort on October 23rd?
Last year I was at the Lansing Center.
Yeah, that's more convenient.
Yeah, so...
Because I am interested, but I am not available to be in a different city on the 23rd.
What's the, what's the, what's that date?
October 23rd, Thursday.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm, I probably would not be available that day either, but again, that's up, I, I would, I would serve if, if you wanted me to, but if there's others that want to go or participate, then certainly I would cede that.
Does this have to be decided tonight?
It's supposed to be decided at the last meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, which is part of why I suggested that Tara and I would be good delegates, because we're already in their system.
Yeah. Well, if you don't mind, then maybe we stick to that for this go-around, and then see moving forward for next year.
Yeah, and...
So, I have a question. If you two are the delegates, but neither one of you can attend that meeting, can someone else, or no one else could, would be able to go?
I think we could probably designate an alternate.
Or if it's something that we have to attend, you said we didn't go last year?
We did not go last year. And it, like I said, it was something where we both had conflicts on the, on the day of the meeting, and it was local, which is embarrassing, but, yes, like, if somebody else would rather do it, we can certainly, they're, they're not going to turn away a board member in good standing who wants to participate.
Yeah. In case Tara and you are not able to attend that, if, if someone else could go, and if it's something that we should be at, then, I'm not saying that I want to do it, because I don't know if I can or not that day either, but it should be attended, I think, right?
At least by one of us, right? Or by one board member.
By one, by at least one of us, right?
By a board member, yeah.
Yeah. What's the date again?
Did you say the 26th, October, or 23rd?
23rd.
Just to be clear, this is what we, that is what we're, that is what we're designating this person, these people, this person or people for, is for that conference.
It says in the letter here that all school board members are invited to attend a delegate assembly, but we just have to...
Dora, do you know, have we attended in the past?
I'm not aware of folks attending much in the past, not that I'm aware of, at least.
It says, it's livestreamed for those who will wish to watch, but delegates must be present in person. Only certified delegates or their alternates may offer motions and votes. Any school board trustee attending in person may speak on the issues and participate in the debate.
Would any, would anyone like to serve as a delegate or alternate?
I just don't know if I physically can be there. I was not prepared to have that discussion right now. I might be able to get there.
I am very certain that I cannot get to Traverse City on that day.
Sorry, and it's, do you, you have to be present all three, 23rd, like, all of the, the 20, the 23rd through the 26th?
Looks like the meeting is just on the 23rd, starting at 7:00 PM. So, it could be a late night drive back, depending how long the meeting takes, right?
Yeah.
Or you could stay the night in beautiful Traverse City. I, I'm willing to be an alternate, just because there's like a, a medical issue that might prevent me from being able to be there in person, but if I'm available and a delegate needs to be sent, I could be an alternate, maybe.
It's, I'm, I teach, I just realized, I teach that day.
Yeah, I teach that day, too.
Yeah, it's a Thursday, yeah, I'm in class.
Trustee Ferris Highland, do you have any, are you able to do this?
I could potentially be an alternate. I, too, have a conflict that day, but same as Abby, I could be an alternate.
Okay.
So, we could have you and Tara, I mean, who knows, Tara might be able to attend, I'm not quite sure.
Could we, we, we does, is it, I guess, I need to, I, I can't pull up the letter here, because my internet's out. Can we designate, do we designate a delegate and an alternate, or is it two delegates and an alternate?
I don't think it says. Like, this is really just the handbook, it's not actually asking us to designate anybody. It's just explaining what will happen at the meeting.
Okay. Could we designate, there's not, I don't think there would be any objection to designating trustee Chambers, trustee Ferris Highland, and trustee Taikaki as our delegates, and then maybe having some communication to see over the next day or two if anybody can make it to the meeting, and that way, we can send a communication MASB as to who we'll be naming. If they, if there is really an issue with it, then we can address that if it comes up.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Yep.
Do we, are we okay with moving forward? And then, that'll give trustee Chambers, who's not here today, an opportunity to share her availability as well.
Sure.
Anything else on that topic of the, of the MASB delegate? And that's, again, that's my oversight, I should have made sure that was on our last agenda, and I did not do that, so I apologize for that. The third issue that we wanted to discuss was communication with the city about these pedestrian issues that we've been hearing about, and there do seem to be a few that are specific to Glen Cairn Elementary, but they certainly are not exclusive to that, to that school. There are families throughout the district that have expressed concerns about pedestrian access to schools. Trustee Ferris Highland, you had mentioned something about preparing some communication to the, for the city council, is that right?
Yeah, you know, I attended the Walk to School with the Glen Cairn team last week, and as did Kath, at, trustee Ed Salt, and so I quickly drafted a letter in support of, you know, what they're asking for, so I can read that aloud, and if everyone is in support of this letter, we can send it, we can make a formal motion to support it, and then vote on it, and then, you know, send it to council before their meeting on the 21st. So I just kept it very simple, I said, "The East Lansing Board of Education supports walkable schools, evidenced by the rebuilding and remodeling of our six neighborhood elementary schools from 2017 to 2021. Additionally, we appreciate all the work various members of the Glen Cairn community has done to advocate for safer routes to school. Therefore, we support their efforts to erect signage, one, that prohibits through traffic on Kensington, and two, that bars trucks on both Kensington and Harrison. Additionally, we support the further study of, one, a raised crosswalk on Harrison in front of Glen Cairn, two, changes in traffic lights on Harrison, and three, the installation of a Hawk pedestrian, pedestrian signal." Thank you. So, that's what is in the letter of support. Does anybody have anything to add, or any questions?
Thank you for attending that event, and for drafting this, I support.
Yeah.
Yes, and it does seem to capture a lot of what Ms. Buchholz said in her comment, so thank you for putting that together.
Yeah.
I would be perfectly happy to, to lend the board's signature to that, to that letter, and send it to city council before their meeting on October 21st. Should we, well, I suppose if the rest of the board is willing to do that, we should amend the agenda with another, with an additional action item, action item G. So, if there's no further discussion, we should maybe move to amend the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda, to add action item G, the resolution in support of a safer crossing at Glen Cairn Elementary School.
So, not a resolution, a letter in support?
Oh, sorry, letter of support.
Letter of support, and it would be addressed to the city council?
Yes.
Alright, so is there a second to trustee Taikaki's motion?
Second.
Alright, so this is only on the topic of whether we would amend the agenda to include a letter in support to the city councils made by trustee Taikaki, seconded by trustee Torres. Is there any further discussion before we move to a vote? Or let's move to a vote, all in favor of the motion as presented to amend the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Alright, the agenda is amended to include action item G. I believe that's all the board discussion that I was aware of for today. Is there any additional board discussion that we'd like to get into before we move on to our action items? Alright, thank you all. Let's move into action items. The first action item is action item A, resolution to support and endorse the Invest in My Kids proposal. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to support and endorse the Invest in My Kids proposal as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by trustee Torres, seconded by trustee Taikaki. Is there any discussion on this action item, the Invest in My Kids proposal?
Should it be discussed and read aloud?
Well, we've already, have we already done the, so is this, have we done a resolution yet, or is this the resolution?
This is the resolution, yeah, it hasn't been read aloud yet.
We haven't read it aloud.
So, we need, yeah, we need to read the resolution into the record.
Okay.
And before we do, we should say trustee Ferris Highland has done a lot of work on this topic.
So, yeah, so I can explain what it is, it's, like, like we said, it's Invest in My Kids, it would be a constitutional amendment to our income tax in Michigan, that, and we're, you know, the campaign is working very hard to get over 500,000 signatures in support to get this on the ballot in November 2026, so, what it would have the potential to do is to raise over $1.4 billion for public schools in Michigan by raising the income tax of the ultra-wealthy in Michigan, less than 2% of people, by 5%. So, I heard about this initiative in the summer, it's like been 10 years in the making, it used to be called Babies Over Billionaires, and it's kind of evolved, and then the language finally passed, and now it's in the, the place to finally maybe get on a ballot, and I thought, you know, with education consistently being underfunded and devalued, that maybe a people-powered campaign could really make a difference. I mean, we're still underfunded, our, our schools are underfunded currently by like 4.5 billion, so it wouldn't cover everything, but it's something, and school boards across the state are getting involved, and MASB is getting involved, so it's just, it's been kind of a grassroots movement that's taking, you know, that's gaining momentum, and they're passing resolutions across the state. momentum, and, um, they're passing resolutions across the state, and I, that's why I brought it to us.
Cool, do you want to read the resolution?
Yeah, I can read the resolution, um, so it's a resolution to support and endorse the invest in my kids proposal, whereas the Board of Education of East Lansing acknowledges that Michigan's public schools are the cornerstone of our communities and the foundation of our children's future, and whereas the Board of Education of East Lansing believes strong public schools attract families, boost property values, and strengthen the workforce, benefiting everyone, and whereas Michigan public schools are underfunded by four point five billion, and more than three quarters of all Michigan public school students and attend schools in districts that are over two thousand per pupil below adequacy, and whereas funding for Michigan's School Aid Fund has significantly decreased over the last two decades, and between twenty fifteen and twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, seven studies found Michigan does not provide enough money for the state's public schools, and whereas in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, Michigan offered the lowest starting teacher salary in the Great Lakes region, and whereas the top one percent earners in Michigan pay a lower effective tax rate than everyday people, pay five point seven for the top, one percent versus seven point one to nine point seven percent for the bottom eighty percent, and whereas the lifetime earnings of Michigan's current K through twelve students could increase by twenty-seven billion if their educational achievement matched the national average, and whereas a ten percent increase in per pupil spending improved low-income students' graduation rates by seven percentage points and their adult hourly wages by thirteen percent. Therefore, it be resolved that the East Lansing Board of Education hereby endorses the invest in my kids proposed amendment to the Michigan Constitution to impose a five percent fair share surcharge on annual taxable income over one million dollars for joint filers and over five hundred thousand dollars for single filers. This funding is to be used to raise funds for career and technical education, reduce class size, and attract and retain educators in public schools across the state. These funds are to be used only for these purposes and must not be redirected and are subject to an annual audit. That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, so, uh, we have a motion on the table, and we've read the resolution into the record, um, is there any other discussion on the resolution to support and endorse this, uh, ballot language? I, um, obviously, as a supporter of public education, I think it's awesome, and I, um, applaud trustee Ferris Highland for the work she's done on this already, because she's been all over the community working on this.
And Abby's joining, or joined, the signature gathering campaign, so.
I haven't collected any yet, Hallie, I'm sorry, but yes, I have.
We'll get there, we'll get there.
And it's great for me, because I make nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars a year, so.
Just under.
Yeah. All right.
I'm, I'm always shocked when I see the percentage of tax for, you know, the top percent versus everybody else, and how it's just not equitable.
Right.
That needs to be corrected.
Yep.
All right, well, if there's no further discussion, I, I say we move to a vote, all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is multimedia renovations, uh, can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase and installation of multimedia and A V hardware for the central administration building and meeting spaces from Moth's in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, thirty dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
Uh, motion was made by trustee Taikaki, seconded by trustee Ferris Highland, uh, we have Mr. Palasty here, uh, if we need to have any discussion on this topic, um, is there any discussion on the multimedia renovation topic? All right, we're going to save you the trip. It's, it appears pretty straightforward, I say we move to a vote, uh, all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously, the next topic is the two thousand twenty-six summer tax levy.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented to impose a one hundred percent summer tax levy to collect all school property taxes.
Second.
Uh, motion was made by trustee Taikaki, seconded by trustee Ferris Highland, any discussion on this topic?
No, let's get those taxes collected.
Full circle, right?
Yes.
All right, all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously, the next, uh, topic is P A one-five-two resolution, which is the eighty, twenty har, uh, versus hard cap.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to comply with P A one-five-two of twenty-eleven as presented.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Ferris Highland, seconded by trustee Taikaki, um, is there any discussion on this topic? Just to be clear, this comes up every year, we have to, we have to make an election here, is that correct?
Correct.
And the election that we are making to comply with P A one-five-two is the preference of E L E A, is that correct?
Yeah, in the past, that's been the case, yes, I don't know if.
Yeah, we don't have.
Pardon?
So, this has come up before, um, and every year, it's trustee Edsall that asks all the follow-up questions, but she's not here, so I feel like I should interject, um, the decision to comply with P A one-five-two, that's the preference of most of our teachers and E L E A, is that correct? Okay, and I, I, I don't think we would put on the agenda if it wasn't, but I just wanted to make sure we were all clear before we voted. Any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously, the next item is policy updates.
I move that the Board of Education approve the updates to the following policies, one, four-one-zero-five-B religious workplace accommodations for employees and applicants, and two, five-four-two-one work-based learning experience.
Second.
All right, motion was made by trustee Ferris Highland, seconded by trustee Lyons, is there any discussion on these policy updates? All right, all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. Item F, approval of contract for Dr. Mark Dobson as assistant superintendent.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract of Dr. Mark Dobson, assistant superintendent, effective start date October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Moved by trustee Lyons, uh, seconded by trustee Ferris Highland, any discussion on, uh, the contract for Mr., for Dr. Dobson?
Can he start sooner? I know. I tried.
I feel like it's important to say that, like, uh, that we've, this was obviously a, a very involved process for the superintendent to, uh, to make this hire and to make this recommendation to us, I was able to participate in one round of the interviews, um, and I was also able to review the materials that the candidates, uh, submitted, there were some really, really awesome candidates, and I think it speaks to the character of Dr. Dobson, that he kind of rose to the top of that group, and it's, uh, I'm excited to have him on board, and I think it's, uh, I think it's going to be a great fit, so I'm really excited. Any other discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote, all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously, Dr. Dobson, it is our custom to invite new hires to the podium to introduce themselves, say a few words, uh, talk about, you know, their priorities or anything they want to inform us about.
Or just say hi.
Yeah, or just say hi, you don't have to, we don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
In case we start the clock, I wanted to hustle under the two-minute, so, um, I'll, I'll be very brief, but good evening, uh, and, and thank you so much, uh, for the opportunity to serve this community and this district, um, I recognize that this is a big role to fill, um, and I'm very humbled by that trust that you're placing in me, um, ultimately, uh, you know, through the lens as a father and the spouse of an educator, I, I believe that we have the greatest and, and most important job in the world, and so, um, if I can help my fellow educators by supporting them and growing them in this craft, then I think that's a job well done, so I look forward to hanging the ground learning and, uh, serving this district and community, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And can you tell us where you came from, or tell the.
Sure, uh, so the, the reason I'm not here today is because I, I, I'm not working in East Lansing today, is, I, you know, I didn't have your approval, and I'm also the principal at St. John's High School, I've been there, this is the start of my fifth year there, uh, before that, I, I'm actually kind of quite boring, um, I was the principal at Byron Area Schools, and that's where I'd spent my entire career before that, so I left as a high school, middle school principal in Byron Area Schools, um, but prior to that, I had been, uh, heavily involved with the union, the school improvement, I was the athletic director there, dean of students, student council, so, coaching as well, so that's the, that's the thirty-second educational, educational history, so, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I think you left out an important detail, you're also Spartan.
I, I am a four-time Spartan grad, so if there was any Wolverines on the board, I'm glad we got that vote out of the way, I, I know, well, she doesn't get a vote, she already, she already put her two cents in on me, so, uh, yeah, so, yes, yes, I, I am, uh, yes.
Good to, good to, to balance out the deck a little bit.
Yeah, it's a good balance, yeah.
Well, welcome, and we look forward to October thir, uh, thirty-first, was that the date? Yeah, October thirty-first.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And good luck to you. Yeah. All right, excited to see the great things that, uh, Dr. Dobson helped, uh, does for the district in the coming years. The next item on the agenda is the letter in support of the pedestrian access issues to the city council.
So I move that the East Lansing Board of Education approve a letter in support of the Glen Cairn community, um, to present to city council on October twenty-first.
Second.
All right, motion was made by trustee Ferris Highland, and seconded by trustee Lyons.
No, not me.
I'm sorry, trustee Torres.
I mean, I'll take it, but it was her.
Is there any more discussion of the letter in support, uh, that trustee Ferris Highland drafted? Let's move to a vote, all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously, and we'll make sure that that letter goes out before the October twenty-one meeting.
I'll get it to you, Hallie.
That's the right date, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no problem. All right, no problem. Um, okay, so I believe that concludes our business, we'll move on to committee reports, uh, the first one is academic and technology, so trustee Lyons.
Yep, um, we have not met since our last meeting, so I have no updates, and we look forward to having, uh, Dr. Dobson, um, at our, uh, maybe not next meeting, uh, we might have one this month, but, um, if not at the following one. Jump right in.
Facilities committee, trustee Ferris Highland.
We have not met.
Finance committee? Are there any updates from finance, and trustee Edsall's not here?
We met, when did we meet, October sixth?
Uh, last Monday, yep.
Yep, and we, uh, got a review of our audit, um, it's, it's, it's awesome. And, uh, we got some state and federal budget updates, and talked about some upcoming board resolutions, so.
Very good.
Mayor will be here at the October twenty-seventh meeting to give the presentation on the audit to the full board.
Thank you, Dory.
Yes.
Make sure that, uh, Dr. Dobson's here for that one. The, uh.
He can watch it.
It's a, it's a, it's a long meeting, as you may know from your experience.
Yeah, it was clear that Lisa has done, uh, did a lot of work, uh, with the auditors, so, but, so thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Allen, exactly. Uh, intergovernmental relations, trustee Torres.
Yes, we met on September twenty-ninth, and this, and during that meeting, we set goals for the upcoming year, one was to reestablish some communication with the city to discuss that email from the East Lansing Public Library, which we've already discussed earlier in this meeting, um, and to set some meeting dates for up, for our upcoming meeting, which will be on, at nine-thirty in the morning on October twenty-ninth.
All right, thank you. Policy committee, that's also trustee Edsall, is there any report from policy?
And we did meet, and we're waiting, you know, on some rewrites, um, and replies from Troon, um, nothing that I want to report on now, um, things are just pending.
And I skipped personnel by accident, I don't, we do not have anything to report. I S O A, trustee Taikaki?
Oh, yes, we met, and, uh, we got a review of mental health services provided to the districts from Dr. Noel Duval, who is the director of mental health and wellness for Ingham I S D, um, she, uh, so the review was basically that the I S D provides individual and family therapy, parent support, group therapy, and helps connect folks to community resources, um, in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, there were one hundred and thirty-four referrals to the program, and last year, we had six hundred and ninety-eight.
Wow.
Um, and these do, uh, um, relate mostly to student anxiety, depression, trauma, suicidal ideation, and disruptive behavior, so there is a need, and it continues to grow, um, so that was really great to hear some of the, um, the great work that's happening, but also the challenges they're still facing, and the increasing funding needs, um, for mental health and safety services in the district, uh, we also got a superintendent's roundtable update from the superintendent of Weberville Community Schools, and he discussed that they had talked a lot about, um, the cell phone ban and discussion on the positive changes that have, uh, they've seen in student interaction and engagement after banning cell phones, um, there was a safety update where, uh, as Dory has mentioned before, the importance of, um, finding, requiring common language, so for ease of understanding in emergency situations, they also discussed, um, twenty-two E funding, and unanimously voted to support the state aid following the student if they transferred districts within the I S D after count day, and we got a budget update, and our next meeting will be on November fifth at eight A M., which is an in-person tour of the Beekman Center in Lansing.
All right, thank you, trustee Taikaki. Announcements, our next meeting will be back to the normal Monday schedule, on Monday, October twenty-seventh, so, uh, please plan accordingly, we'll be, we'll still be here, correct?
Yes.
For the foreseeable future. Are there any other announcements?
Oh, I have one, uh, since you were so kind as to give my kid a shout-out for his cross-country performance, the middle school meet yesterday, I also wanted to mention that the first-place finisher for East Lansing Middle School on the girls' team was Tessa Cosper, who finished thirty-fifth, which is a huge accomplishment.
All right, thank you. All right, any other announcements? We will stand adjourned at eight oh-nine, thank you all for being here, we'll see you on the twenty-seventh.